Good evening and welcome to tonight's Muskogee City Council meeting for July the 26th of the year 2021. Tonight, we will start out with invocation led by Councilman Alex Reynolds, followed by a flag salute led by myself. If you'll please stand.
Heavenly Father, please forgive us of our sins, those which we've knowingly committed and those which we have committed without knowledge. Father, please bless us as we sit here tonight to do the city's business. Please bless our citizens as we continue to move forward after COVID and are coming into some uncertain times as well. Watch over and guide us. Help us make good decisions and move forward together. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Flag salute. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an announcement, a special announcement by our city manager before we get into tonight's business.
So yes, before we get into business, we are in City Hall today. We're operating off our generator power. And so if the lights flicker, if the AC isn't working as well, if the, if the feed to, to our channel 14 or to our internet rebroadcast, if those are interrupted, that's why. We may be going back and forth between generator power and OG and E power. So just wanted to give that kind of status update about where we are and what we're doing now before we start the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, please.
Mayor Marlon Coleman, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan. Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Can we have a motion to excuse, it looks like Councilman Morgan as well as Mayor Coleman?
I'm making a motion. We excuse.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to excuse Councilman Morgan as well as Mayor Coleman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. All right. Our, this time, we have our minutes before us for July the 12th. There's minutes. Can we entertain a motion to approve those?
May for approval. A second.
Have a motion in a second to approve our minutes for July the 12th. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. All right. Next, we have our consent agenda before us. Do we want to approve the consent agenda as presented, or do we have any items that need to be removed?
May for approval. A second.
Have a motion in a second to approve those items on our consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. At this time, we're going to our regular agenda items. Item number nine, please.
Receive presentation from the Muskogee County Health Department concerning its sports physicals and COVID-19 vaccination event at the Martin Luther King Jr. Dream Center and take other necessary action.
All right. This is my agenda item. Everybody knows, any chance I get a chance, I'm gonna brag on the great things that take place at the Muskogee Martin Luther King Center. We have had a great partnership since, I believe, it's been
March the 11th.
March the 11th of last year.
Of this year.
Of this year. March the 11th of this year, we've had a great partnership with the Health Department in trying to do our best in this fight for COVID. And so we have some upcoming events at this time, and I want to present at this time, representing the Muskogee County Health Department, Ms. Delby Walker, at this time with some special information.
So, as he stated, this is week 21 of our pod that we've had at the Martin Luther King Center. And I'm excited to tell you that we still have people coming. Just last week, we started an uptake with young people and their parents coming in. As always, we just want to provide opportunities. We don't try to force anything on anyone. With, you know, as the Health Department, it's our job to provide something in the community as well as something at the Health Department. And so every Thursday, we have that. And this week, we have the privilege of pretty much doing a mass physical, sports physical, and vaccines for the community. So on the 28th and the 29th, we will have from 9:00 to 6:00 where parents can bring their children that need sports physicals. It's free. We'll have three nurse practitioners there to offer those services. And then at the same time, we will still have the COVID vaccine going along with that. You probably received the invite in your email today from me that was inviting you to be our guest at 10:00. We will have our wellness units parked out front. We have a trailer that will be used throughout our eight counties. At one point, we will begin maternity services, and we will offer all kinds of services out of our large trailer. But then we have vans. And with those vans, we will take them into the community wherever we get a call from. Today, we received a call from a, a school. We will take it to the school and we'll vaccinate. They're asking us to come vaccinate parents and young people before school starts. So we'll go wherever the call is. I want to introduce you to Jeremy Colbert. He will be our manager over our units and our special grants that we have coming up. Also, sent you an email that had some data in it, kind of wanted to up to, get you up to date on what we have. Those numbers that I sent were as of 7/21. Total cases for Muskogee County, 9,614. Total deaths, 178. Total active cases, it's 137. And what the EPI told me to remind you of is with those active cases, they're active for two weeks, and then they automatically go into the recovered number that you received, which was 9,299. And then also, you guys received some data, kind of some numbers. Total population, 42.1% fully vaccinated, and that is just all ages that we have. Then you also, 12 and up, 50.2% at least one dose. These are at least one dose. 18, 18 years and up, 53.6%. And then our population at 65 years of age and older, 86.6% completely receiving one dose. Fully vaccinated, you'll see in the other column. The community is also invited to tour the wellness units that we'll have displayed. They'll be there from 9:00 to 6:00 both days, so anyone's welcome to come and tour it. But we're inviting you guys, county commissioners, superintendents, to come out and tour it between 10:00 and 12:00 on Wednesday. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Walker?
Thank you. As always, it is a pleasure to partner with you all. And on the 25th, you also received an invitation from me that we are partnering with Mayor Coleman to have a luncheon where the Commissioner of Health will come and be our keynote speaker. That is on August 25th. We'd like to invite you guys to that as well. And thank you to Deputy Mayor Reed for allowing us to come and work at the Martin Luther King Center for 21 weeks where we're, it's a privilege and an honor to serve our community. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
On August 25th, where is that gonna be at in time?
It's still working out. We believe it's gonna get there.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number 10, please.
Receive report from the Muskogee City County Port Authority regarding their industrial development projects, goals, and activities for 2020, and take other necessary action.
Ms. Miller?
Yes. The city has a contract with the Muskogee Port Authority to provide industrial recruitment and retention efforts for the city. Part of that contract is they come and update us from time to time, and they are here. Marie and Scott and Kimbra and others, Kim and Lindsay, and the whole team is here. And we appreciate you guys being here to give us what, whatever update. And I'll turn the floor over to Marie, if that's okay.
Thank you, city manager and counselors. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. For the record, my name is Marie Seinar, and I serve as the Director of Industrial Development for the Muskogee City County Port Authority, operating under contract with the city of Muskogee. Before I get started, do you mind if I pass a little handout that I prepared to you? So I'm gonna walk you through our presentation or our report that we prepared on our community activities. But what I've done is I've tried to summarize what I will be presenting the next 15 slides into one slide for your review. Okay, so I would like to first just start off by reminding you of our mission statement. And so our mission statement is to create an environment for economic growth through advocating for pro-business public policies and delivering innovative programs and services to increase business investment and job opportunities in the community. We do this through really four main goals or objectives, what we refer to as our pillars of economic development. You see those are business attraction and recruitment, business retention and expansion, workforce development, and product development. And you can kind of see our plan of work or our action plan under each of those pillars below. We'll first start off by talking about our recruitment strategy. Of course, we respond to all projects that are considering Muskogee. But when we look at, you know, efficiently using our resources and leveraging all of our time and monies that we have available, when we go and actively recruit companies, we want to make sure that we are recruiting companies that make sense for Muskogee. And so we have done and engaged a number of target industry analysis for Muskogee. And here are our five target industries for Muskogee. Those are food and beverage manufacturing, construction materials manufacturing, metal fabrication, automotive parts manufacturing, and aviation and aerospace manufacturing. That's a new one that we've really added for this year. You can see from the images that are included within each of those target industry sectors, those are pictures from right here in Muskogee. Aside from the aviation and recruitment, that's a little bit of a stretch for Muskogee. But what we're trying to do whenever we are looking at our target industries is really build upon our existing industry clusters. And so to give you a little bit more example of that, you can see here's our business, our target industries, and our, the existing businesses within each of those industries. What we really want to do is we want to really leverage our workforce strengths, right? We have the workforce to support these types of industries currently here in Muskogee. And we also want to help strengthen our existing businesses by bringing their supply chains closer to them. So, highlights from our recruitment activities in 2020. We managed 37 recruitment projects. Nine of those remained active at the end of the year. Of the 37 recruitment projects that we worked, 30 of them were new projects that originated in 2020. And just, I'll take a little pause there. 30 new projects for 2020, that's only a decrease of three projects from 2019. I was really concerned when the pandemic hit in March, the impact that the pandemic was gonna have on our lead generation and recruitment activities. And I was pleasantly surprised at the end of the year to know that we were only down three projects. I will be back probably in the next month or so to give you a report of the first six months of this year. I can tell you, we are 11 projects ahead for the first seven months of this year than we were all of 2020. So we definitely did not miss a beat on our recruitment activities. You can also see where we get our leads from. Some companies directly reach out to us. Other leads come to us from our allies, and our allies can be our existing businesses. They can be realtors that we work with, both locally, regionally, and nationally. They can come from our utility providers. OG and E is one of our best allies in terms of lead generation efforts. We also rely heavily on our relationship with the Tulsa Chamber of Commerce. They implement the Tulsa Futures Regional Economic Development Initiative, and we are very much an active participant in that effort. I actually co-chair their Business Attraction and Marketing Task Force, and also serve on their Business Retention and Expansion Task Force. We also rely heavily on our relationship with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce. And as you can see, that's where we get a majority of our leads from each year. We also serve, both Lindsay and I, on the Select Oklahoma team. That is a kind of a spinoff or a combination of the former entities, which were the Governor's Economic Development Marketing Team and the Oklahoma Economic Development Council. So those two have merged, and they're now Select Oklahoma. And so we're definitely an active participant in that, and also serve on the Oklahoma Foreign Direct Investment Team. Muskogee is one of six communities within the state that actively work together and pull resources to attract outside foreign investment into the state. You also see a breakdown of the projects, those 30 new projects that we received in 2020, a breakdown of those by industry sector. Again, I reminded you what our target industries or our focuses are, and you can see how the projects that we ended up responding to, how those played out. I'll also note that along with the report that you received, you also received a list of those 30 projects and a little bit more specificity in terms of the industry sectors and the companies and the types of projects in terms of jobs and investments. So, I always add this slide in there. I know it's kind of, oh, here she goes again. But this is definitely, I want to remind you guys, in any given year, there are 1,500 companies looking to expand or relocate in the U.S. There are also more than 25,000 communities with paid economic development staff, just like myself, that are competing for those 1,500 projects a year. You can see the odds, 75% of those projects end up locating in an urban area. So for Muskogee, you know, we stand to really compete for 25% of those 1,500 projects a year. Add to that that 90% of those projects will employ less than 100 employees. So the odds of catching that big fish are very slim. That said, if we're not actively engaged in attraction and recruitment activities, there's no expectation companies are just gonna come knocking on our doors. And so we have to actually be out there promoting ourselves and, and, you know, we must continue to leverage our partnerships. We have to make sure that we are being strategic in our external marketing efforts. We must continually be working to improve our product, and we'll talk about some of that. And we also must be prepared and ready when companies are looking at us. As far as improving our product, over the last year, we have acquired, the port has acquired additional lands with, to expand John T. Griffin Industrial Park. In terms of catching some of these big fish projects, they require large tracts of land. And so we continually are monitoring opportunities to add to our existing industrial parks and build upon what we already have to be able to effectively respond to those projects that are requiring larger tracts. And, and thanks to you guys, we now have a comprehensive site due diligence and master plan for Muskogee-Davis Regional Airport. That was approved by you guys last year, and that has now been completed. So we now have that to be able to, to provide to our aviation and aerospace companies that we're working with. In addition, and to kind of strengthen what we have there, we have also worked with the airport and have created an aviation recruitment video. If you have not seen that yet, please let me know. I'd be happy to share that with you. It's something we're very proud of. We are marketing that on our newly launched muskogeedevelopment.org website, and also have provided that two-site location consultants that work those types of projects. In addition to including that in all of our marketing proposals that go out to those types of industries. We've also successfully submitted and received two P3, our public-private partnership economic development pooled finance grants, from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce and the Oklahoma Finance Authorities. These will provide gap funding for our Port Rail project and our flood mitigation project. The amount of those two grants totaled $2.9 million. We also successfully received an EDA grant award in the amount of $4.9 million for our flood mitigation project. We've also advocated for the creation of a tax increment finance district at the port. This will be to help cover any gap funding that we will need for those two projects, and also help us to better prepare the sites that were underwater, if you will, jeopardized during our 2019 flood. And so raising the elevation of those tracks, building a levee ring to protect those undeveloped properties and also the existing businesses that are currently within the port. We also participated in a groundbreaking ceremony for the 43rd and 45th Street Project Phase Two. So we worked with the city in receiving, or applying and receiving an EDA grant to help fund improvements to both 43rd and 45th Street, in addition to running a sewer line. There were funds left over for that, so we got to expand the project area. And the businesses in and around that area that utilized that road could not be more thankful for your efforts as well. So thank you for that. So as recruitment becomes more competitive, wins will only go to those communities who are actively working to improve their product and who are armed and prepared with the information necessary to respond. Because business recruitment is so competitive, and successes are few and far between, we spend the majority of our efforts focused on facilitating the growth and expansion of our existing businesses. They say in every community, 85% or more of the new jobs and investment each year will come from your existing businesses. So we do that through a variety of activities, mostly geared towards relationship building with our manufacturers. We go out and visit them. We ask them, what's keeping you up at night? Because it's what's keeping you up at night is the things that we need to be working on as a community. We also have continued to be the administrative arm of the Greater Muskogee Manufacturers Alliance that was formed in 2008. We held eight meetings in 2020. We did have the opportunity to do one in-person meeting before the pandemic hit. The rest were done virtually, but we didn't miss a beat there as well. Some of the highlights from last year, we did work 25 expansion projects with our manufacturers. And again, I'm gonna take a note, 25 expansions in 2020 during a global pandemic. That was nine more expansions than we worked in 2019. So I'll tell you a little bit about that is, there was a lot of grant money out there, both at the state and the federal level. Our manufacturers did a great job, and we helped them in applying for some of those funds. Three of our manufacturers received manufacturing reboot grants. And so for those manufacturers that were kind of on the fence, I'm thinking about expanding, the grant funds and the money that were out there available to them kind of helped get them over that hump. And so we were excited that they could be, that they could take advantage of those resources. We had 14 new expansion announcements. Those expansions that were announced in 2020 equate to 243 new jobs, an average salary of $41,825 a year, and also $57.7 million in new investment. We also, in addition to the 14 expansions that were announced, we completed 12 expansions. So we track these projects from beginning to end. And so 14 new projects were announced, 12 completed. Those 12 projects that completed resulted in 86 new jobs at an average salary of $46,356 a year, and also generated or resulted in $65.55 million in new investment in our community. A couple of other highlights, we did work with Muskogee County and the Board of County Commissioners in petitioning and calling for a special election to fund the Muskogee County Bond Finance Program. This program had been around since the 1970s and were really instrumental in a lot of the growth and development, particularly in the 80s and 90s. The program essentially ran out of funding in the late 90s and had really been dormant for 20 years. And so, as you know, the election was held on May 11th. Muskogee voters did vote to authorize $20 million to fund that program again. And we have a line of companies, both existing and new, that are lining up for, for those funds. We also advocated on behalf of manufacturers against ONG and OT rate hikes. ONG has divided their pulling regions, and that resulted in some significant transmission and distribution fees for our manufacturers. Our efforts resulted in the formation of a natural gas subcommittee of the Oklahoma Industrial Energy Consumers Group, and also delayed the changes of both the ONG and OT rate hikes by at least six months. And there's more data in there in your, in your report. Additionally, we served as a communication liaison during the COVID-19 pandemic. We facilitated numerous business-to-business introductions for PPE manufacturing. We partnered with the Muskogee Chamber of Commerce in organizing the Muskogee Forward Economic Recovery Task Force. That task force monitored the economic impact the pandemic had on our economy. Also provided a clearinghouse for communication and technical assistance in navigating the newly created government programs. We recommended approval of a small business grant to the City of Muskogee Foundation to help offset the cost of acquiring PPE. We promoted job openings, conducted business surveys, held roundtable virtual discussions within five target, or five industry sectors. We promoted and assisted with applications for a number of state and federal grant programs, which I mentioned, and also assisted with the COVID-19 mitigation plans as required by the city. We did, unfortunately, had four manufacturers that had some layoffs as a result of the pandemic. We worked with each of those four manufacturers with layoff assistance. So we visited with their employees, provided them with information on other job opportunities, on, on education opportunities, if they wanted to reskill themselves. And so, that's definitely important. Not only is the strategy of growing our businesses more effective, but our existing businesses are our best marketing tools. And I've got that here. You can keep them. If you, you can, if you, if you can keep those that you have happy, they will be your best ambassadors and best source of recruitment leads. Again, we want to grow our existing industry clusters. And so we want our existing businesses going out there saying good things about us, right? And so they are definitely our, our best source of recruitment leads and our strongest advocates. Workforce development. So I'll try not to get on my soapbox. One, the number one and two factors affecting business closures and relocations in the U.S. is workforce availability and the availability and access to skilled labor. The best way to help our existing businesses and set ourselves apart from our competition for new investment is to ensure, not only can our companies get access to the talent that they need today, but ensure that they have access to a future pipeline of workers with the skill sets that they're gonna need 20 years from now. That's what they're looking for. What do you got today? And what are you gonna do to make sure I have workers 20 years from now? We're very proud of our Dream It Do It initiative. With that initiative, we have connected our area manufacturers with our local workforce and education partners. That committee does everything from plant tours to bringing manufacturers into the classroom, doing an annual math and engineering competition in conjunction with the Muskogee Area Education Consortium. We host three block party events each year, which are designed to bring in every eighth grader within a particular school district. So we do, currently, we do Muskogee, Hildale, and Fort Gibson once a year, and we bring in their entire eighth grade body. We run them through four activities around manufacturing, and also one of those is, of course, is kind of a career, career fair style where they actually get to interact with our manufacturers. Also, our Greater Muskogee Manufacturers Alliance, three years ago, created the GMMA Education Scholarship. Last year, even during a pandemic, our manufacturers themselves funded $2,500 and awarded two scholarships of $1,250 each to two individuals. One is a recent high school graduate, and one is an incumbent worker currently working at one of our manufacturing companies looking to improve their skills. We have got to stop the brain drain occurring as a result of students not being made aware of the career opportunities that are available to them right here in Muskogee. I was born and raised in Muskogee, so I take this very seriously and very to heart. We are very proud of our efforts. That said, our manufacturers need workers today. So we actually got a little jumpstart on this. In February of 2019, or 2020, excuse me, we held a focus group. We brought in six of our manufacturers, their HR managers, the plant managers, sat them down, asked them to identify what their three immediate workforce concerns were. Number one, they need help filling job openings that they have right now. Number two, after-hours or non-traditional hours childcare. And number three, access to reliable transportation. Those were the three initiatives or the three top concerns that they voiced to us during that focus group. So with that in mind, in So, with that in mind, uh, in March, we launched the Muskogee MFG Jobs Initiative. So, where Dream It Do It is our future pipeline initiative. Muskogee MFG Jobs is there is our immediate workforce assistance uh, initiative. Uh, within Muskogee MFG Jobs, we are addressing immediate and short-term workforce needs, including representation at job fairs, uh, promotion of job openings through our feature Friday paid social media advertising, addressing concerns in the area of transportation and childcare through our relationships with our partners. We're working uh, with the Connect Muskogee Group to make sure that uh, our manufacturer or industrial parks are included and, and being considered when evaluating uh, the, you know, locations for where our transit uh, will make their stops. Uh, and then also encouraging the use of non-traditional labor, uh, specifically working with the Oklahoma Department of Rehabilitation Services and also former justices involved. Uh, and we're also providing direct one-on-one assistance in developing hiring and staffing and training plans. Uh, we pulled all of that information together. Our, our future pipeline initiative with our Dream It Do It efforts and our Muskogee MFG Jobs Initiative, uh, we had an opportunity uh, to apply through the Governor's Council on Workforce and Economic Development. And in December of two thousand twenty, we received one of nine communities that received the designation of a Certified Center of Workforce Excellence, or CWE. Uh, again, we were one of nine communities to receive that designation. We were one of four to receive our designation in the manufacturing sector. So, we are one of four communities in the state with a center of certified uh, a certified center of workforce excellence in manufacturing. Uh, we also, as part of that designation, have developed an action plan and also an advisory committee. Uh, we have called that committee our Muskogee County Advisory Council, and it's made up of all the representation from our employers, our industry-led associations, educational institutions, training providers, workforce partners, tribal governments, state agencies, and nonprofit organizations. So, all of those entities are working together and, and implementing the action plan of our CWE. There's some of the highlights uh, from last year. Uh, we did have an opportunity to do a few plant tours and a few, few block party events uh, before the pandemic hit. Uh, and we're definitely gonna be gearing up those uh, pipeline efforts uh, this coming fall. Okay, so. Economic development, then and now. So, the days of workers chasing companies are long gone. Uh, it used to be that you attract a company to your community, workers will move to your community, and in turn, they improve the quality of life. Nowadays, communities must provide a quality of place that will attract talent. People aren't looking for jobs and then moving. They're looking for where they wanna live and then finding a job. And so, we have to make sure that we're creating a place that will attract talent and will in turn, in turn, attract the companies looking for that talent. So, I'm often asked, when are we gonna land, land the next Dow tile? Um, with the days of companies or workers chasing companies over, the success of our recruitment and expansion efforts is directly dependent upon our ability to attract and retain a workforce. Uh, economic development does not happen in a vacuum. It's very much a team sport. Uh, what you all do and the decisions that you make as counselors definitely impact the quality of life for the residents in our community. Uh, improvements to our road and utility infrastructure, encouraging the development of new market-rate residential properties, and investments taking place uh, to improve our parks and school buildings, all help improve the pride that our community has. And, and also will result in retaining and attracting workers that companies are looking for. And so, we definitely must all be pulling on the rope in the same direction and supporting each other. Uh, speaking of supporting each other, I'm very proud of the work that our office has accomplished. Um, and while I have the opportunity to stand up here in front of you, I could not do what we do through our office without our team. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to introduce the rest of our team. We've got Lindsay McCall, our Workforce Development Manager. Uh, Kim Hackus, who has recently been promoted. Kim is now our BRNE, or Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator slash Office Manager. Uh, also recently received uh, a national certified uh, BRNE Coordinator designation. Uh, Canberra Scott, our Port Director, and also Scott Robinson. Um, I did say Port Director Emeritus. I don't know that he's exactly given, Chief Lunky. So, I wanna thank you all for your time this evening. I know that this is a lot to take in and I appreciate you entertaining me, but I, at this time, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Maria at this time?
Yes, uh, Maria. As I was listening uh, this evening, um, I hear that you're stressing retention um, more so than new recruits. And you said it's because of the uh, it used to be a time where, how'd you put it? We look for a job, companies come. Now, it's in reverse, where we have to create the atmosphere for the companies to come. Uh, and I get that. So, um, when you say eighty-six jobs, new jobs from the expansion, are those new jobs? Or are those people that's been in the company that they may been promoted? Uh, do we count that? Are these actually new?
Net new jobs.
Net new jobs, okay. So, when you say the projects are um, you have thirty new projects, is that? Uh, you said we had how many completions, meaning that the project?
Uh huh.
And then completion. Can you explain that?
Yeah, uh, Counselor McGee, so a company may decide in two thousand nineteen that they're going to install a new product line. And they're working with their corporate office to justify that capital investment. And finally, you know, so they're reaching out to our office, wanting to know what's available at the local level in the state to help uh, to convince corporate, for example, to bring that investment to Muskogee. Uh, and so, that will happen in two thousand nineteen. The line will begin to be installed in early two thousand twenty and may not be complete until two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, okay. I see what you mean by that, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've been recognized.
Yes.
Yes, Maria. I was just curious, the company, like, I hadn't been in manufacturing for a while. That was since two thousand and three, I hadn't had a job. But I'm just curious, like, the manufacturing companies that we do have, when you go to work for them, do they train you? Cause when I went to work for Georgia Pacific back then, you know, I got to be trained on the machines and I didn't have to go to VOTEC or anything like that. They took, I got on-the-job training.
Yeah. So, most of our manufacturers, just by need, um, develop, cause each one of our manufacturers, even if they're within the same industry sector, what their process and their machines are, are maybe completely different. And so, there's definitely a lot of on-the-job and in-house training involved. But there are certain things like safety and quality, uh, that, uh, math, measuring, uh, those types of skillsets that are across all industries within manufacturing. And so, those can be taught uh, either through Indian Capital. They've got a great entry-level program as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I have one more.
Okay.
When people come from out of town, well, I'll tell you what, one more, I'm gonna ask you this question. The one that prior just got the jobs, they just got on the electric cars?
Canoe.
Canoe. Did we ever try to apply anything like that for them?
We did, mhm. It's, it's within our project list, yeah.
Well, I was just curious, you know, when a company come here in Muskogee and you have a route you take them through and show them my town? Is it a particular route you take them through? I'm, I'm just curious, because I know I drive the route here in Muskogee, and I'm disturbed about some of the routes that would, that, you know, that could be drove through, you know, and just, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I know you're gonna take them to the best.
Yeah.
And you ain't gonna take them where, where I, what I'm talking about that I see every day in my ward. But I'm just curious of how this process works when you've got people of status come to our city? And, you know, where you, I've asked uh, this question before.
Okay, so, I'm gonna answer uh, the first comment first. Um, yes, canoe that announced at Mid-America Industrial Park and Prior, we did have the opportunity to, or to provide a proposal as well as round-two information. We were down-selected. Um, we did not know that we were eliminated until after the announcement was made. If you followed that announcement though, they did um, locate on a four-hundred acre tract within Mid-America Industrial Park. Currently, our largest tract is about a hundred and eighty-five acres. So, again, when we talk about acquiring lands and building up our acreage, uh, that's definitely something that didn't work in our favor for that particular project. Uh, in terms of site visits, routes are definitely something that we consider uh, very heavily. Uh, you know, I think that there's this whole broken window analogy that I like to use. You know, we drive around town all day and, you know, it's the broken window that you see when you pass, you're on your way to work every day, and eventually you stop seeing the broken window. It's our job whenever we're hosting these site visits to remember every broken window and distract them as much as we can when we're driving past the broken windows. Um, that said, we can only do that when we have them in our car or we have their attention. When they leave our office and they go get a drink at Station One, for example, or Muskogee Brewing Company, um, we, that's out of our control. And they will often drive around town. You know, they're staying in our hotels. Something we should all be concerned with.
That's good, but one more, I'm gonna let you sit down. The, are you honest with them and tell them that here in Muskogee, in order to go to a mall, you have to go to Tulsa? And I'm real concerned about this, and I say it every time I'm up here. And I would hate to move to a city that don't have a suit for me to wear if I'm getting, if I gotta get casket ready. Cause you know Muskogee, we don't have no suits you can buy, not here in Muskogee. Number two is the hospital. The hospital is fine, but we still using that hospital as a depot to Tulsa. We don't have the doctors around here. Doctor Who's is good. Don't get me wrong. But as far as actually, that's just, we got to be real up here. We don't have the doctors that we need, really. I mean, a lot of doctors to choose from. Since we lost CCOM, that has really hurt Muskogee, Oklahoma. But I'll leave it at that, and I will turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other, any other questions? All right.
I have one more and I'm, I'm gonna be quiet. Because we get often asked the question that you alluded to, uh, Maria. What do we tell those that asked, when we bring another manufacturer in Muskogee? Everyone knows it's been twenty years since Dow tile, but there's really been nothing else. Is that a true statement? Um, as far as new starts, manufacturing?
Definitely not. Uh, for example, three years ago, we landed Stamp Tech. Stamp Tech is a supplier to Captive Air and currently located in the former Coors Distribution uh, facility next to Dow Tile. So, there are smaller companies, some small metal fab companies, um, but not to the extent, co- communities of our size don't land Dow tile-sized projects.
Often, okay.
It's, it's tough.
So, what would you, what would we tell them? What would we say? As a new startup, we looking at ten jobs, twenty jobs as our average? What, I mean, how do that conversation go? To uh, bring forth some confidence that we are uh, really um, advertising or promoting Muskogee in a way that will create job opportunities? Because everyone up here say we need jobs, but when we get down to the mustard, you know, we really need to know what that is. I hear retention from you, so that tells me that we build relationships with retention.
Retention and expansion.
And expansion, yeah, and, and expanding, you know. So, how do we uh, give that information? So, we're really rural and we, we say, yes, we do, and we do about twenty-five, thirty jobs? I mean, to, to kinda let them know that we are, we are in the market.
Definitely. And, and Counselor McGee, I encourage anyone who's interested in learning how we promote Muskogee to come visit us at our office. We'd love to sit down and talk. I mean, I love what I do, and so, we definitely love to share that with anyone who's interested in listening and are giving me an ear for thirty minutes. Um, but in terms of, you know, i- it's, it's tough, but we are definitely doing our part.
Okay, okay.
We all have to be working together.
I agree with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, yes, Maria, I had a couple of things. One is, uh, I appreciated Counselor McGee's question. You might go back a few slides. You had the, the number of a hundred and forty-three, I think. To me, that was informative, right, that in those twelve months, um, uh, we didn't have, we didn't bring Dow tile in, but a couple of slides further back, I think, towards the beginning, we were talking about. Yeah, it's kind of that bottom left, fourteen expansions with two hundred and forty-three jobs. I, I had the number wrong, was it? So, two hundred and forty-three is a lot, and, cause Dow tile has four hundred and fifty employees, right?
Three hundred and eighty-five.
Three hundred, so, so, um, we didn't have one big announcement for three hundred-something, but we had several small announcements for two forty-three and I, and.
Fifty million dollars.
Do this include, excuse me, Frisco in this number under this two forty-three? Uh, it's expansions, right? When we said we have number of new expansions, fourteen, is that estimate new jobs? Is that EST?
Yeah, estimate.
Estimate. So, did we actually do two forty-three or just?
So, those were the new expansion announcements.
Announced, okay.
So, whenever they tell me that, you know, we're gonna do this, it's gonna result in this. And that's why we track both announcements and completions.
Okay.
Because what you plan to do may not be what you end up doing.
Right, and so, that completion of this fourteen was really?
The announcements were the fourteen. The completions were the twelve that I had mentioned.
Yeah, that's what I get, okay. Makes sense.
The other thing, Maria, I just wanted, you talked about being a quality, uh, building a quality place and then making people wanna live there. And um, you mentioned very briefly that one of the things had to do with um, creating housing opportunities. And so, that's been an effort that the council's been behind as far as trying to um, how, trying to make sure that we have increased housing opportunities here. How important is that to um, building a workforce and our economic development efforts is having better housing opportunities in Muskogee?
Um, well, I'll give you an example in terms of our inbound and outbound migration. Uh, we currently have ten thousand workers that commute to Muskogee every day for work. Why aren't those ten thousand people living here? They already work here.
Thank you.
Good question, Maria. Have we did a survey to ask them, ten thousand people?
Uh, that's from the U.S. Census Bureau.
Oh, okay, got you.
All right, Maria, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And all the work that the port does. At this time, we go to agenda item number eleven.
Discuss and consider approval of a draft bid package for mowing of all city facilities, including parkland, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, well, first off, I'm gonna try and get that little clicker, uh, because we're gonna talk about mowing and, and there's a lot to do, um, a lot of things to, to go through. We'll try and do it relatively quickly. Staff was requested develop a bid package for solicitation for mowing of all city facilities, including parkland. The council unanimously passed this at a council meeting on June twenty-eighth. Um, so, since that time, uh, we have, have gone to work uh, on trying to do that and see what that would look like. Because as we've discussed some, just in that last agenda item, uh, making the city look as good as it can is important for a lot of reasons. Uh, for uh, quality of life, for visitor's safety and enjoyment, better quality of life for our citizens and visitors and, and business recruitment as well. So, we got that um, in, that direction in first in a public works committee, then uh, in a council meeting, um, that was to be reported on by last week. We have uh, the, the attachment that's in your packet, counsel, this week was also is the same, uh, same information that was uh, provided last week, but the council agenda item was deferred until today. Um, during that time, we've been having to identify the scope of work, which you'll see is, is very massive, the amount of things that we mow as a city, what kind of resources are needed, how we go about bidding out that kind of massive level of work, uh, have further discussions with council, and then we had to discuss this with our AFSMI uh, union, our new, our, our non-uniformed employees, because any uh, outsourcing of work that requires uh, layoffs of employees has to be discussed with them and there's a process to go through. So, during that meeting, we did reassure them that the council did not have that in mind, that we were looking to put additional resources into um, to our mowing and making our city look better, not to transition from employees to outsourcing, based off the feedback that, that many of you had given me and, and statements in the public meeting. Um, the questions that uh, I've been asked a lot, uh, certainly by employees, but um, council members and members of the public as well. Um, so, we're gonna address some of these today, um, and, and as to see how we get down the road on improving how our city looks, um, through better maintenance, through mowing and, and landscape work. So, um, the city staff had already taken some directions i- in this way, uh, even before we started this with additional seasonal help at the sports complex. We contracted mowing on North Main and US sixty-nine. That contract was in place, uh, ready to go on the first of July, the first day of the fiscal year. And so, council providing direction and more resources is just gonna speed up this process. Uh, this is a, just a quick information about the scope of what we do. A lot of mowing, you know, the mowing season, six to eight months, uh, about a fif- a hundred and fifty work, uh, area sites citywide. Uh, almost seven hundred acres work of worth of parks, Public Works has, uh, um, a hundred sites, uh, by themselves. And including twenty-six currently done by outside contractors and there's all different kinds of mowing, you know, right along the, the medians, but also back where you don't see in detention ponds and other things. Um, so we do, uh, have outside contracts already and so these are some examples of those, uh, of, uh, areas that Parks has, has done in the past. Um, they have different specifications, um, depending on what they're mowing. Um, Public Works, there's a couple of items on the agenda to, uh, later today to renew contracts that are already in place. The first one, um, with, uh, Grass Monkey that does, uh, some, uh, stormwater areas for us. And then the last one, um, uh, DND that mows along the turnpike. So both of those are outsourced contracts, uh, and there's, uh, those are several others that we use currently to try and help, uh, keep the city looking good. Just a few details on parks, um, we talked about the, the amount. There's three different areas and three different, um, kinds of crews that work in parks to try and keep things up. Public Works, the same kind of thing, there's, uh, different sorts of work that has to be done, so we have a lot of different kinds of equipment. Um, we have a lot of seasonal help that we try to do to make sure that gets, uh, that gets done. We need more people in the summer when it's, when it's time to mow than we do year round. So, uh, as you, uh, all are well aware, um, the seasonal help has been hard to find, uh, this summer. And for, not just for the city, I've seen, uh, just this last week, uh, I think we had, um, a lunch where we tried to go, uh, get food in the restaurant and they were closed inside, didn't have enough people, we had to go through the drive-through instead. Um, anecdotal evidence that one of our convenience stores has been closed down part of the week, this week in town, because they couldn't get enough people to work. Um, and, uh, we, we're in the same boat. I've even seen, um, uh, on, on Facebook, people that have lawn mowing businesses saying, I need help. Well, we need help to mow lawns too, we're, we're having a hard time finding people, um, so we're trying to keep up as best we can. Um, I will say also, uh, on this, that this past weekend, I was at a, a, uh, training in Enid. I met with a lot of other city management, uh, professionals, they're having the same kind of problem. Uh, as I drove to Enid, I saw other communities that are having the same kind of problem. Um, which is a lot of rain this summer, a very wet summer, I haven't had to water my yard very much and it's nice and green. Um, and that's goes for everything that we mow as a city. Um, and lots of other cities are having a hard time finding people to mow, uh, and that's not just here. I spent, um, the weekend in another state, uh, and even the, by their fancy airport, their grass is tall and ugly looking. And I was surprised at that, but it's, it seems like it's everywhere. That doesn't mean we don't need to do better and so we're very happy that the council is willing to, to, uh, provide additional resources. Here's the resources that we currently use. Um, we've spent about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, in salary plus benefits every year, um, for staff that mows. And that's kind of prorating it, if there's somebody that mows part-time or part of the year, that's not their whole salary, it's just kind of part of their salary. Um, we have about one and a half million dollars worth of equipment invested, um, we buy new equipment every year, it's in the capital outlay budget this year. Council allocated money to buy new and better mowers, um, again, uh, that money so far doesn't include buying gas, doesn't include, um, you know, the operations, the, the, the money we spend at the, the garage at fleet maintenance to keep them up and running. So, um, those are, those are the kinds of things, it's a, it's a large scope effort and, and so that's why it's taken us, uh, a long time. Uh, we, we feel like we've done it quickly, but it's taken about, uh, two or three weeks to get the bid package in progress. Um, to break it down into a way that we can put it out to vendors that they can say, yes, I can do all of it, I can do some of it, I can do a few of these mowing things. Um, so that it's, it's bidable by different people, you don't have to be a huge conglomerate to be able to bid on, on this, uh, on this package. So what you have in your packet, the first about twenty-three pages of it, uh, for this agenda item are exactly what you requested. Which is, what do it look like if we bid out every single thing that we mow? Um, and that gets back to our questions about how much it'll cost and how it'll impact our employees. Um, so a lot, along the way, we've, we've said, you know, we may be some low hanging fruit along the way. That if we had, uh, a budget number that's been tossed about, about a hundred thousand dollars to make our city look better, what would be the best way to spend that money? And so the, the last, uh, pages, uh, before the contract in your agenda packet, again, these were in your packet last week and we've got them available today. We sent them out by email separately as well. Um, where the Parks has a priority list, um, and, uh, Public Works has a priority list. And so we've gone through, uh, these meetings and we're really ready for feedback from the council. Uh, on the areas to outsource and improve. If we want to do all of them, we're ready to do that, it'll take us a little while to get it in a final form. If we want to do a more concentrated kind of hundred thousand dollar package. Here, um, this, for reference, here's about the top five things on the Parks list. Um, here's about the top five things on the Public Works list. Um, a lot of these were in comments that council has given to me as well. Um, and then, uh, other council comments and, and thoughts, um, that I received, um, since last week. Uh, from council feedback are a couple of new things that we don't currently mow, um, with contractors or city staff. Um, War Memorial Park, the Batfish, they've asked us to see if they'll include, um, their, that facility in their, in the bid packet. Uh, I think the understanding would be that they would pay it, but it would at least get the bid, the bid going. Um, the fire station's currently mowed by, uh, by the fire, uh, department, but that can be added. Um, that would be, again, new work that, that we're not currently bidding or having our staff do. And then this would be, uh, Public Works, um, there was feedback to make sure that we maybe add Shawnee Bypass from US sixty-nine to the turnpike. Making sure that's in the, in the package, uh, and making sure we're concentrating on the main thoroughfares for medians and gutters. So again, um, the, the next steps are for me to pause and to be quiet and we've got that feedback. Um, what we can do is, uh, is, what I would say is a, a good course of action that we can move on relatively speedily is to take this, the priority list that's been developed and that you guys have given me feedback on. Add as many of, um, these things as you guys wish, uh, or certainly subtract anything that's on the list. Um, but to whatever degree we're able to, uh, to finalize, uh, the, the council said you guys wanted to see the bid packet before it went out. So when you guys tell me, uh, uh, what you want in it, then we can move it forward and get that bid package put out. So I'm happy to, uh, take feedback, uh, encourage discussion and, and answer any questions.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, have you recognized?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I agree with all this on here, Mr. Miller. Everything on here, we definitely need help because our grass is bad. I was out on, uh, sixty-nine today, on South sixty-nine, and I was looking at them cut it. I had one problem with it. I don't know if these was contractors or were they city employees, you know, today on sixty-nine highway?
Mr. Stewart, were they in the medium or were they off, off the right of way? It, it was a contractor, it was in the medium.
Same problem I had with the contractor and the same problem I had with the city workers cutting the medium. Pick the paper up first, don't just throw the tr- paper everywhere and make it, it looks worse that way. You know? So when I was passing by there today, I seen, you know, they, uh, they were out there cutting. And also, one thing, if I hadn't learned nothing else at George Pacific, I learned safety. They was cross- crossing the road with the lawn mower and the weed eater on the handle, you know, that's unprofessional. Be like the ODOT people, set things up when you're out there cutting. Your, your safety's out there with them, uh, them semi trucks and all that stuff. You know, it needs to be, safety needs to be in, included in this also. But that's, that's the problem I had when I was going through there today, it's just, you know, not picking up paper first before you cut. You don't, we don't cut our yards at home without picking up the paper before we cut our yard. That's just, you know, that's just something I seen today. And, uh, like I say, we definitely need help on all of this and it, and the contractions that we do, do get to do this, if we do this. I hope we get some good ones, cause everybody can't cut grass. Simple as it is, everybody can't cut, uh, cut grass. And you know how picky I am? I want stuff neat and in order, edged. That's another thing, Mr. Miller, we wasted money on, on sixty-nine, one time we went down there and edged it. Didn't do any good, cause we laid it grow back over. You know, waste the money there, but that's just me, I, I go out and I observe stuff. I just don't sit up and talk, I observe what I see. And I see a lot of things that goes on out there that just, just ain't right. But I turn the floor back over to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I guess, I thought my comments now at this time, Mr. Miller, first of all, um, you know, I don't know about the rest of the council, but we want to make it clear. It never was our intention to, uh, say, come mow all our grass for us. I don't, I don't believe that we wanted to put our city workers out of a job. And so that's one of the things that I want to make sure that, uh, have we distinguished what our city workers will cut versus the what we need to bid out? Cause, uh, I, I think that this agenda item all came out of a, uh, need to find additional help. Instead of, um, directly going saying, you know, finding people to come cut all the grass in the city of Muskogee.
Correct.
So, and, and I agree that that was definitely conveyed, the motion that was made was all, so that's why you have all. But that's why we have these two pages at the back that have those recommendations that you said. That if we do these things, it will help the city wo- workers and provide them more resources. So that's why we have this page and this page.
Okay.
Um, and that's why they're here and that's why we gave them to you last week. If these are the things you want, then it will, the city employees say this will help. If we do these things, as many of these as we can do, and we know, by the way, we are not gonna be able to do all these things on this list for a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Uh, but, but the more we do, the better the rest of the city's gonna be able to look. And I think that's what your, uh, your intention was, that you're saying. And I, I have conveyed that every time I've talked to employees that we're not looking to lay people off and I don't believe that was ever the council's intent. And I have echoed that to them when they've, when they've said that.
Okay, so I guess my next thing, and you know, and I, and I apologize if I'm speaking on behalf of council. I guess I could say for Derek Reed, we need to get this up and going. So is a hundred thousand dollars enough or is there a, what, uh, are there, is there a rock or something where we can pull out enough money to make sure that we can put the money that's needed into this project? Cause we want to, you know, once again, we talked about all the problems in Muskogee, we gotta make it look good in order for people to feel good and want to come and make this their home, so that's, you know, all of our goal. Um, is that something the council needs to do tonight to say that we need to put more than a hundred thousand dollars into this to get it up and going? Cause we need to, we need to get moving.
And if, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
And is, in that, would that be including, like, if we need more money to cover all the priority lists plus the new items that was listed? For new mowing? For, for additional funds if it, if more is needed over the hundred thousand?
So, so what I, what I would suggest, um, is two things. One, I, I mean, I, I think that what you said makes a lot of sense, that we don't know, we don't know how far a hundred thousand dollars is gonna go. We don't know how, how much it's gonna, how far it's gonna get down the list and we don't know how good it's gonna make the city look. Um, our process legally is that we're gonna have to take, once we have a bid packet out, it's gotta be advertised for about three weeks. Then it's gonna take us at least a week to get it at, and done and in front of us and in front of you to approve hiring these people. So if we're able to do that, we're looking at probably, best case, a month, more likely case, five to six weeks before we're hi- we're getting people hired to do this. And so, um, what I think is, uh, that, what I think that gives us an opportunity to do is hire people for the last part of this mowing season. So we, a hundred thousand dollars would definitely not be enough to do it for a whole mowing season. A hundred thou- for this fiscal year, we would do a hundred thousand dollars. And as we make, as we look at next year's budget, we learn from what we do the short part of this end of the last year. Number one, it gives us a chance to, um, evaluate, uh, contractors, did they do a good job or not? Um, number two, it gives us an idea, what does that amount of money do as far as helping? And number three, is it what we really want to do or not? So it, it's, um, uh, and the other thing is, uh, we have already passed our budget. So, um, the, there, there's not a rock that we have. So the, that we've, we've got, so the hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna be able to do, um, uh, my proposal is that we take it from our, uh, special project, or not our special projects fund, our matching grant fund. Um, because, uh, some years we spend it all and some years we don't. If we get towards the end of the year and the matching grant fund is starting to run out, that's something that the council can look at and address. If they're saying, hey, there's this big grant that we want to apply for and we need a match and we don't have the money, we can try and address it that way. But, uh, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in the city budget, uh, especially after the budget's already been passed. And so, um, that's, uh, so our recommendation is to try and is to take that amount of money and make it go as far as it can go and see what that looks like, uh, and then be prepared next year during the budget.
Okay, so what, what do we need from the council tonight? Should I, I, I don't know, are we ready to do something or?
Should look at, uh, a motion to, would it like to approve the bidding of the priority list plus the new mowing?
Right, the, the ones that are on the screen before you, if those are the ones that, that you would like to make sure are on there.
Yes.
What is, what is, um, w- w- what, what has previously been done with the fire stations?
I'm looking to see if Chief Jones is here, but, uh, yeah. Chief Jones, would you, would you come to the podium and address that? Uh, I don't wanna, I think I know, but I feel like you would be a much better, uh, expert on this.
Deputy Mayor, since I've been here thirty-six years, we've been doing our own mowing, all of it. Mowing, weed eating, blowing, all of it, except for the city office, except for my office. But all the fire stations, we, we mow ourselves.
And Deputy Mayor, they do a heck of a good job.
Yeah.
Like I say, you know, most, most of the farmers, they, they have the lawn services.
Yes.
And if you, this is just our revenge.
Yeah.
If I'm going by and see somebody's yard, a lawn or what, I'll tell you what, go look at First Baptist Church down on Seventh Street, who, who does that lawn. Go look at the fire stations, who does, like the, like the farmer do. Go look at Armstrong Bank, it's so nice, that ev- everything is edged and neat. You know, but I commend you, farmer, cause they, they do good work. Not only lawns, but they do a li- every little everything.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna shut up, Mr. Miller, you know, you was talking about, it's hard to get help. I can understand why it's hard to get help nowadays. Because myself, I wouldn't want to go out on a job without no benefits in this hot heat. I have a stroke. I ain't got no insurance or anything, that's gonna, that's gonna mess with my, you know, family. That's a lot of times where people don't want to work, just because you want, they don't want to pay them nothing in the first place and then you don't want to give them benefits. That's just what I see. That's just me. Cause I, hey, every job I've had, I've had good benefits and made good, and, and, and made good money per hour.
So Chief, uh, I didn't mean to fini- cut you off, are you finished?
I'm finished, Derek, I was just saying that, yeah, the manager brought that, well, we can't get people to work. That's a lot of reason we can't get people to work, we want people to work for nothing without no benefits.
Ch- Chief, so, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get a clarification, we got this as new. So you guys are asking us to, to, to bid this out with the other bids at this point?
Well, not us directly, um, not the chief's office, we, we did not ask for it, but, um, for some reason, it was included in the package.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, um, as far as the park chief office, we didn't have anything to do with it.
All right. Okay, so, once again, council, y'all gonna make me, y'all gonna make Marlon Coleman get me out of my job. We on three items and we've been here over an hour, but, but what are we gonna do with this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we look at sending the bid packet, bid packets out with the priority list as directed by staff, plus the new mowing.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, um, that we send out the priority list, is that correct? Is, is that the wording, Rory?
Uh, the priority list and the new mowing that was discussed, which is War Memorial Park and, uh, fire stations.
And the two Public Works items.
Yes, those items as well.
Now, War Memorial, you guys are gonna?
We're just looking for some help getting a bid, we'll cover those costs, we just don't have the ability in between meetings to vote to take bids.
Hmm, so we, we don't use the volunteers anymore?
Uh, not right now, no.
All right, I'm curious on that. If you got good volunteers, why don't you use them, if they do a good job?
Well, all the equipment was stolen, so we're unable to use the volunteers.
Also, all the equipment from the Batfish, somebody stole it from the Batfish?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. We all guess that answer.
Oh.
Wow.
Deputy Mayor, uh, in, in the bid process, uh, is it possible for us to do the priority list? And I know they want to add, uh, the additional, but can we get them together and then what it is without the additional?
Well, what I would, what I would anticipate is when the bids come back, they will be itemized. And like I said, we're not going to be able to, to likely afford all of them. So that will be part of that process is what can we award, right? And is that what you're saying? You'll be able to look and see what we want to?
Yes. And I just want to say is also, you said that, uh, you went to the matching grant, but we also have emergency funds, right?
Uh, we do, that requires a separate council vote and a declaration of, uh, there, there's a lot of limitations on what the emergency fund and our, our reserve fund can be used for. And so we're, this, we're-
This is emergency, right? This is emergency, right, Mike?
I, I don't, I don't have, we've got, I, I understand there's urgency. I think there's some legal definitions in your ordinance about what an emergency is and I don't have that in front of me to give you that exact answer, to say, to tell you whether-
I'm looking for the money, Mike, so, okay, thank you. Uh, I'll ask Mr. Tucker if you can let us know what the emergency language is, just in case we need to get there.
If you have to.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. Let's get the roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. Item number eleven passes. Item number twelve, please.
Consider approval of final pay estimate in the amount of nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars for Tonto Environmental LLC for wastewater treatment plant biosolids removal from digester number one project, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, as it reads, this is final payment to Tonto. This project was bid for eighty-six thousand four hundred dollars. That was to ru- remove eight hundred cubic yards of sludge out of digester number one at a dollar eight per cubic yard. Tonto has finished the project. We're satisfied and we're recommending final payment of nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. Item number twelve passes. Item number thirteen?
Consider approval to renew mowing contracts as follows. Base bid number one, three, and four to Grass Monkey for drainage easement maintenance and D and D ag services for turnpike mowing, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, these are actually contract renewals. Uh, they're on your, uh, agenda tonight, Mayor, because, or Deputy Mayor, because these are over twenty-five thousand dollar limit that were, uh, allowed the manager to approve, so we put them on the council's agenda. These two contracts together, uh, for Grass Monkey and D and D ag services, by the way, total a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, D and D mows the, uh, turnpikes and Grass Monkey, uh, mows many different drainage maintenance easements around the community. Uh, we do recommend approval. Both these companies are doing a good job and we're very satisfied with them.
All right. Counsel?
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I recognize a minute?
Yes, sir.
I can say, I don't know nothing about D and D, but I do know about Grass Monkey. When they come to Robinson Park and do our drainage dish down there, it's right. So if it wasn't, you know I'd be saying something up here. But they, they are a very good contractor. Turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
All right, roll call, please.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. Item number thirteen passes. Item number fourteen, please.
Consider approval to appoint Michael Gregg to the Muskogee Tourism Authority to serve a five-year term, filling the expired term of Roger Bell, beginning August one, twenty twenty-one, and expiring July thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, or take other necessary action.
Dr. Who's?
Yes, thank you. This is my item. I'm here to recommend Michael Gregg to the Muskogee Tourism Authority Board. He's a long-term resident of Muskogee. He also brings in a, a, a field that a lot of us, that we need to utilize more with the, with the racing and the racetracks and other things for Muskogee. And so I'd like to move, make a motion to approve him to Tourism Authority.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, sir.
There's a gentleman here.
No.
He's not here. Uh, Dr. Who's, I don't know the gentleman, but I, I'd like for you to, to, uh, inform him that when he gets on this tourism board, to do things right. Because I don't never, ever again want anything to happen like happened with that marijuana, where we got a board, they got application, they got board members on there falsifying city councilors as board members. If it been me, we'd have had a lawyer up, because that's slander. You don't do people that way. So, this is city money and city money is city business. And that's one thing I never will forget from this tourism board. They did deny it, but the person that put the council, councilman and councilwoman in jeopardy by lying on them, I never will forget it, when it comes to tourism. They, it could have went the other way. So that's just my opinion and I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have roll call at this time?
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. We do have one citizen at this time that have signed up to, uh, speak. Ms. Betty McConnell, if you'll take the stand, give us your name and address and you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Assistant Mayor, if I could have five minutes. My name is Betty Balkum McConnell. My address is sixteen twenty Lollapalooza Street, Muskogee, Oklahoma. And in the absence of Mayor Coleman, I'm here to speak on the behalf of our youth in Muskogee, the NFL and the WNBA players of Muskogee. That's why I'm speaking tonight.
Ms. McConnell, if you're, uh, asking for five minutes, that would have to be approved. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to extend, Ms. McConnell, by two minutes, making five minutes. Roll call, please.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. Ms. McConnell, you can begin at this time and you have five minutes.
Okay. We're wondering why Muskogee looks like a ghost town. We'll never know who those, who these young people met along their journey. Uh, we are talking about the NF players and the WNBA players, uh, that made their journey and stuff at the city of Muskogee. Uh, some of the players, uh, Robert Thompson and Tracy McGee, at one point, they was in Muskogee once, they were in the NFL. They were there in Muskogee giving book bags away and I called Muskogee, uh, Phoenix. They was at, uh, I'm gonna get the, uh, the name wrong. Christ Builders Faith. Anyway, they were over there giving book bags away during, uh, the beginning of school and I called the Phoenix to see what they take their pictures and they did not. Uh, and that night, uh, they went to Tulsa and Tulsa recognized them. Uh, Muskogee did nothing for them. And, uh, they went to Tulsa and Tulsa gave them a dinner. And I talked to Reverend Coleman and I'd also talked to a businessman to see if they could do something for, uh, athletes. They went and made it big, uh, in the name of the city of Muskogee where they were from. Uh, Mayor Coleman had did his address a couple of weeks ago and he talked about doing, um, part for, uh, the champions. That's what he's gonna call it here in Muskogee downtown at the Greenery. It's a shame that Muskogee, uh, we have more buildings that have those marijuana advertisements on it than they do the youth that made it big. I asked for a mural for them and Reverend Coleman said that he would do it. Uh, I had talked to a businessman here in Muskogee and he asked us, why didn't we go to the Martin Luther King Center? But after several discussions with him, we were gonna meet like for thirty minutes, but we stayed out there a couple of hours and talked to him. I talked with, um, uh, um, NAACP president, uh, uh, Reverend Cutler. He went with me, but the bi- businessman said that he would do in that meeting, some donations to the local churches here in Muskogee. And in the future dates, uh, I asked him, would he do something for the community? And when he would do that, he and I would get together and we are gonna do something for the community of Muskogee. And, um, we are asking, I am asking, that, um, Muskogee City Council, that we could do something better for our youth in Muskogee. We wonder how come we have, like, nobody here, we, uh, ask outside people to come, but we don't recognize our people that gone away and done good. We could give them the keys to the city. There's nothing wrong. We have the Zaya Festival. We invest a lot in, like, flowers. We could give the youth, ask them back, ask their parents. We could give them, like, a parade or something. We could do better than we've done for them. And there's nothing wrong with the city giving them a banquet or something to show that we appreciate them. Other towns and stuff say the town of, you are welcome, this is the home of. But we have some NFL players and for the ladies, we have the WNU players. And Muskogee do absolutely nothing. But yet and still, every time it's time for y'all running for office, then you have your signs and stuff and want everybody to vote for you. But once you get in the office, you are nothing but for yourself. You don't recognize nobody else. But we have youth that have graduated, gone out and made something of themselves and we can't even get the city of Muskogee to even buy them a dinner. Why did they even have to go to Tulsa for them to give them a banquet? And they're from Muskogee and Muskogee gave nothing. And they don't even want to come back to Muskogee. I think that's a shame. And so I think that Muskogee can do better than that. But when y'all are all getting ready, uh, to want people to be re-elect y'all, then y'all all have these signs, these billboards and the little flashing lights, elect me, elect me. But what do y'all do for the citizens? And I think when they graduate from school and they've gone to college and they made it big, the least y'all could do is acknowledge them. But Muskogee, Merrill Haggan made the song, uh, "Okey From Muskogee." That was a big hit. Everybody rallied around them. These people went to the NFL.
Ms. McConnell, I'm gonna have to cut you off, uh, unfortunately. Your time is up.
Oh, shoot. But anyway, I'm here for the youth in Muskogee. You can do better. Amen.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McConnell. Item number fifteen, please.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, local number twenty-four sixty-five. And if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number ninety-five. And if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, local number fifty-seven. And if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to section three oh seven B four, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Justin Wardor. And if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. E, pursuant to section three oh seven B four, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. Consider convening an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Arrowhead Mall versus city of Muskogee, CJ two zero two zero four seven, filed in the district court in and for Muskogee County, Oklahoma. And if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Roy, do we need to open the door before we proceed?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds? Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. This time we were going to executive session. We will reconvene from our executive session at this time. Call back to order. Item number fifteen? Okay, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Ivory Van?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Here.
Alex Reynolds?
Here.
Stephanie Morgan, Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Who's?
All right, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, item fifteen A pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to, uh, discuss ongoing negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, local number twenty-four sixty-five. After being briefed on the status of those nego- negotiations, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve the proposed term sheet with modifications as discussed in executive session in accordance with council policy three dash six dash seven.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes. That one passes. Item fifteen B?
Pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes, the council convened an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number ninety-five. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing negotiations, I also believe an appropriate motion would be to approve the proposed term sheet, uh, for an offer with modifications as discussed in executive session in accordance with council policy three dash six dash seven.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Item, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, pursu- uh, item C pursuant to section three oh seven B two, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, local number fifty-seven. After being briefed on the status of those ongoing negotiations, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve a proposed term sheet with modifications for an offer as discussed in executive session, all in accordance with council policy three dash six dash seven.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve C. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Item D pursuant to section three oh seven B four, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Justin Wardor. After brief, being briefed on the status of that claim, I believe an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city attorney to, uh, negotiate a settlement of this claim within the parameters discussed in executive session.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please.
Tracy Who's?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Here.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Ivory Van?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Uh, item E pursuant to section three oh seven B four, title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss the lawsuit styled Arrowhead Mall versus city of Muskogee filed in the district court in and for Muskogee County. After being briefed on the status of that lawsuit and having further discussions with the city attorney, no action is necessary at this time. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
All right, that concludes our agenda for tonight. We are to excuse.